And we are live. Welcome to Reform versus Abolish the Police, a debate on the future of public safety. I am Bruce Pointset, one half of your moderating team tonight.
And my name is Donovan Smith.
Yeah, and why we're here, basically, we all know that, you know, we see the headlines, we see the stories, we live it in our lives. We know that public safety around the police, but the entire system of public safety needs, you know, systemic change. So instead of having, you know, the argument of whether or not, you know, we even need to have this debate. Right now, tonight, we're trying to shift that a little bit about what we're going to do to change the system. And, you know, we're going with two of the, you know, biggest schools of thought right now, which is, you know, reform versus abolition. And we have Vince Jones Dixon and Max Smith here to, you know, have an exchange of ideas on those subjects. So we can, as a community, explore this because again, it's marketed as a debate, but this is really a discussion to move us towards action.
Absolutely. And so just as this whole conversation is happening tonight, be sure, as you're out there on Twitter and social media, to use the hashtag Reform versus abolish, just so we can track the conversation alongside y'all.
Yeah, and you know, I just want to say this event is in collaboration with Vanport Mosaic, a group that does wonderful work around memory activism. And specifically, this is a part of the sixth Vanport Mosaic Festival, which started on May 26th and runs through June 30th with virtual and in-person events. You can join them on June 26th through June 27th at the North Park Blocks for live music, poetry, and spoken word performances, as well as conversations, a number of different great vendors, a Z Machine, and even the History is Now Museum. So check out the full site at vanportmosaic.org for their full program. And Laura will be in the chat from Vanport Mosaic if you have any questions.
Indeed. And now we're going to bring our two guests to the stage and explain the rules for tonight's stream.
Oh, wait, wait, let me get the, let me do rules and format. And then we can, yeah, introduce our guests. So tonight's debate is broken down into basically three main subjects. We're going to be talking about public, or we're going to be exploring public sentiment around these ideas of reform and abolition. And we'll be taking a look at the police union, and then we're going to be spending the bulk of the debate exploring public safety infrastructure and sort of these competing ideas and what they look like. So we have, we had a lot of great community engagement. We put out a survey, you know, asking for people's questions specifically on reform and abolition. And, you know, we got a bunch of, again, you know, great questions and prompts that we'll be putting out to our participants this evening. And each question, we're going to be giving, people will be directing some if they're reform-based. You know, obviously with Vince representing reform, or if they're abolition-based, we'll be directing them at Mac. And people will have opportunities to respond. We'll give people two minutes for their initial responses, two minutes to, you know, for rebuttal, and then one minute each for any comment back one time. And, yeah, Donovan, I'm missing anything?
No, we'll be tracking what's happening out there on the social medias, but there won't be too much space for random question asking on this particular stream. But still, if you have things coming up, you know, feel free to put those out there in the chat. And, you know, they can use to further the conversation, again, beyond this space. But with that, we're going to go ahead and bring Vince and Mac to the virtual stage. So first up, we have Vince Jones Dixon. Vince Jones Dixon was unanimously appointed by Gresham City Council to fill vacant position three on July 21, 2020. He was elected to serve a four-year term on November 3rd, 2020, and sworn into office on January 5th of this year. So welcome to Vince.
Hey, good evening, brother Donovan, brother Bruce, and the whole Vanport Mosaic family and everybody out there here. Here with us this evening, I'm excited to jump into the conversation.
Thank you, thank you for being here. And next, we have Max Smith. Max Smith is an award-winning journalist and activist in Portland, Oregon, the United States. He is the editor of We Out Here magazine, a regional hip-hop online magazine. He is a well-known figure in the Black liberation movement, especially for his calls to defund the Portland Police Bureau. Welcome, Mac.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you both for being here. So first, we're just going to have y'all go into your opening statements for the night, and we'll start with Vince.
And you each have three minutes, sorry.
Okay, great. No, thank you so much for just the invitation, the opportunity to be here with you all. As Donovan mentioned, my name is Vince. I serve as a city councillor here within the city of Gresham. Recently, as he mentioned, got elected, and I primarily ran on a platform of reform and focusing on public safety, and that's what brings me to the conversation today. We don't have a lot of these conversations publicly outside of, you know, the community groups and what have you. So when you guys reach out to me, I was like, yes, let's jump in. I have no problem sharing my passion on this, on this topic. I grew up here in Northeast Portland, graduated from De La Salle North Catholic High School. Currently, I work in the death care industry as a funeral director, participating and supported in a number of nonprofits. I'm a father, and a father of two, have been married for 10 years as well. And my life experience, my lived experiences help to inform how I lead, and then also just my vision and my goals around just reform in general. I believe that when I think, when I state, when I think of reform, I think of the community and how it takes all of us to be a part of just this change and the progression as it pertains to public safety, not just one entity or one person. And a lot of it is at the helm of city government or your local government. So I'm looking forward to sharing that perspective with you all this evening as well. And then also, I'm looking forward to hearing just more from Mac as it pertains to just what it truly means to abolish. Just, I still think of it as reimagining, but just abolishing public safety in general, specifically around police, and looking forward to learning from others in the community around just both, just varying perspectives. So again, thank you, again, brothers, for the invitation and inviting me out this evening.
Thank you. And next, Matt. Matt, you're on mute.
Hey, thanks for that. I'm Max Smith. I'm really glad to be here, excited to talk to Vince about the things that, you know, he's played and that he has going on. I'm really excited for whether to, you know, be selected to a city council in the state. So that's really exciting. I am a concerned father. I have three children in the Portland Public Schools. I have a toddler at home as well. I've, I run a magazine. I'm a public utility worker. I do some security work. I've done a lot of things around this city. I've lived here for over 30 years now. And this is really my home. I do believe that abolishing the police is currently the most urgent and achievable step towards Black liberation. And I don't, as someone who for a long time believed that the police could be reformed and should be reformed, I think that we're currently past that possibility. I think that abolishing a police has become a serious discussion because the discussions around the police reform have just never been. I mean, 70 years ago, people were, you know, talking about the police reform, and those conversations really don't look a whole lot different than the convos that we're having now. So I think really that if I'm thinking of a police reform and thinks, you know, things that I would think of there, you know, I'm thinking about like eliminating, you know, a qualified immunity and abolishing the police unions. But I feel like everything else that that's discussed is really just performative. So I feel like with the public sentiment, you know, churning in that direction, I feel like that's why we're here.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to get into the meat of tonight's discussion. As Bruce said earlier, the bulk of what we're going to be asking tonight is actually questions that we source from y'all as community. But as we go into the first question about public sentiment, of the public sentiment portion of this debate, we're going to start with a question that we have crafted as your moderators. And so the first one is directed to you, Vince. And the question is this. The Gun Violence Reduction Team in Portland Police Bureau is a special unit that's been rebranded several times over the last two decades as an arm of quote-unquote gang enforcement. The City Auditor's Office released a report in 2018 revealing the team kept randomized lists of quote-unquote gang members, most of whom were black, many of whom weren't gang members at all. This team has been reinstated under a new name this year and is recruiting for a new community oversight board to keep them accountable. And so the question is, after decades of similar oversight boards, calls for better training, and courageous conversations between community and police spitting out similar outcomes, why should the public believe in these as vehicles of change? And we can't hear you right now.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Perfect, great. First, I forgot to preference during my introduction that I can't speak on behalf of city council or the city aggression because they didn't give me permission to do so. I am an elected, and then I can't speak for the city of Portland, but I will definitely answer your question. That's Vince, the community member. So first, I think, believe the community should be involved in these conversations around just oversight committee as far as like, what are we looking to achieve? And the metrics, I think they're having that conversation now. What I've heard from community members that have been victims of just the violence, not just gang violence, but any types of violence, they have shared both the effectiveness of having a specialized team around that's focused in those areas. But the biggest thing that's missing is including the community in the conversation as to like, how do we accomplish just community safety as it pertains to violence in general? That's just not the, I don't think, personally, I don't think it's just the law enforcement's job, they're reacting. I don't think it's just the law enforcement's job. I think we should have community-based organizations and partner, strengthen the partnerships with other organizations to address the issue. The biggest challenge is ensuring that the community is a part of the conversation as it pertains to how do we measure the effectiveness? And just in addition to that accountability, because as you mentioned from that audit, people of color were being stopped that had no connections to just gangs in general. So that's, those are, that's my, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Matt, do you want to respond to that? Matt, we're going to stay off mute.
It's raining over here, so I'm trying to, you know, keep it quiet. I think that Vince is spot on. I think, though, that as we talk about, you know, the community groups and things like that, something that I've really found over the last four or five years of, you know, looking at the police reform and whatnot, is that oftentimes those community groups that are set up are not actually, you know, community groups. They're very often just set up by the police or by other groups that are usually tied in, you know, to the police. And so they tend to dominate those groups and control the agenda. So I think that while community policing is a great, you know, is really an important thing, I think that in many cases, it's just a substitute for policing. So if those community groups can be, you know, I guess, independent enough to ask for something else and actually have that ask respected, I think that's a great path to go down.
Yeah, and could I add to that? I think we have a new director of DPSST, and he spoke at a meeting.
What that acronym is?
Oh, I'm going to have to look it up. It's the training for all the officers here in the state of Oregon. So it's the, I had it, but I don't, maybe we can look it up and then bring it up. But he was talking about accountability in general. And I think it's important that we have both community members that have been impacted by, you know, just overpolicing or just the methods that we use to keep the community safe a part of those conversations. And like Mac said, sometimes it may seem as if that we're handpicking specific people to accomplish a different, a specific goal. That's not applicable or a true reflection in the community. But I totally lost my train of thought. It'll come back to me.
I was going to add that DPSST is the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. And they do all this security and police stuff for the state. So I have to have, you know, a DPSST card to do with security in the state of Oregon.
So new information from this debate, if you take nothing else, Mac is a police officer, is what you should take from this. So Bruce, you want to take the next?
Yeah, so our next question was submitted in by Cormac Burke. So thank you Cormac. And it'll be directed first towards Mac. And it's the notion of quote-unquote abolish leads one to feel like there will be no accountability for inappropriate behavior, and frankly, sounds like anarchy. If the messaging around abolish is different, you either need to use a different term or provide some context around how people don't end up living in fear. So it's not really as much a question as it is, I guess, a statement for you to respond to. But yeah, would you like to respond to that statement?
I'd love to. I think that's hilarious, and I think it's hilarious, just like when Obama said, "Defund the police," that's a silly phrase, you know, and then it caught on. It's one of those things that's saying abolish sounds like anarchy. Yes, they both, I'm sorry, with A. So it becomes my job to educate everyone on what abolishment actually means. Like when they abolished the slavery, it didn't, I think, of anarchy, or did they? Or did they? I think they did. And that's why they fought it so hard. It's the same reason that they're fighting it now because fighting against law enforcement and defunding a police entering the carceral state is really, is really ending slavery. So of course, it's going to say, you know, anarchy sounds scary, or abolishing the police sounds scary. But that's because you're not educated. If you educate yourself, it's not really a scary thing, you know. The word "police" is a scary thing to a lot of people because the policing means that you're controlling people and telling them what to do, and that's not American. So if we're not educated, then the word "police," it should also scare you. But it's just a matter of being educated or not.
Yeah, and Vince, would you like to respond to anything Mac just said?
Yeah, are you going to have an opportunity to share exactly what does abolish mean? Or what does that, what that would look like if we were to abolish the police today, per se? What would that, what would take its place, or is that a part of the questions?
That is part of the questions, but you can, what abolition in general means to you, Matt?
Yeah, I think that abolition in general means that we're eliminating the carceral state, right? So we're eliminating the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline. We're eliminating the, the, the factory-like brewing of criminals and black, you know, communities and just shipping them off into jails to, you know, clean the governor's mansions for free. This is what we're trying to eliminate. We're trying to eliminate the breaking of families by overpolicing, right? So eliminating the production of crime by serving the needs of the people. So I don't think that eliminating policing like happens overnight, right? I don't think that like people protest and then like they scream and a building burns, then it's just abolition occurs. That's not, that's not how that works, right? So people have to actually build the systems outside of policing in order to do that. The issue is that the police have like a monopoly on public safety in most cities. Like in Portland, the police actually have a contractual monopoly over public safety programs with the city of Portland. So that makes it difficult legally for other organizations to actually do the work that we always talk about, such as the community groups coming up and building and creating these things. Because departments like the DPSST and others also require certain things and also can control how much, you know, a community group can actually do. So again, building outside of the police really means breaking those ties with the police system and building systems outside of that.
And what you touched on, what you just touched on actually moves into what our next topic is going to be, specifically about the union. So the question also comes from Cormac Burke. But this question says, how would you go about holding the police accountable for problematic behavior, particularly around abuse and racist policing when the union seems to hold all the cards in virtually all contract negotiations? And that question, we'll start with Vince.
Yeah, we have to have metrics, and we have to define what does that look like? And what does that mean within the state of Oregon? And even more specifically, here within the city of Gresham and then the city of Portland. The biggest thing that's been missed, or one of the challenges is just accountability. You know, what does that really look like? What is healthy, what is, period? I was going to say, healthy accountability. Just accountability in general. Someone has a complaint, how do we measure it? How do we, how is that complaint resolved? How's it tracked? Does it go in the file? Or does it go on that person's, on that person's record? How does that impact that person's, their career? Should it, should it not? Every department, I believe, should be having those conversations. And those are the, those are the type of the conversations I'm looking forward to jumping into here within the city of Gresham. So and then as it pertains to the unions, I mean, you negotiate your contract every however, however many years, that's where the community comes into play as far as influencing those decisions and giving your counsel to folks that you elect to these positions as far as making adjustments or changing the, changing the contract so it's reflective of what truly, what the needs and/or expectations are there within your own jurisdiction. So again, you, the community, has the power, and we should exercise that power every four to however many years that the contract is renewed. So. Oh, did I lose you?
Donovan, is that me?
You're on mute, Donovan.
Okay, y'all can hear me now. Figure out the mute, we're going to figure out the mute, y'all.
I'm just staying off mute, if that's okay.
Do you have anything in response, Matt?
You know, not a whole lot. I would say, you know, this question is definitely for Vince because in my world, there are no police to hold accountable for their behavior, so there's no union for them. But I would say that in the real world, the issue that we are currently having in this city of Portland around the union contract negotiations is that the community is literally blocked out from participating. And so, you know, it's a we-can-watch kind of deal. But there is no actual participation. Even after I spoke to Ted Wheeler about it on, you know, on TV last year, and he promised that there would be. There is no public participation. So that's, that's very interesting. And then also, since they still can't agree, it's actually going to a private arbitration. So it'll actually be done below doors, right? So that's, that's how they, you know, I'm issue with the police contracts. And also, you know, the police have stipulations that are built in through their union legally or whatever that they can't, that they actually don't strike. So basically, if things don't go their way, they basically just get what they want. So there's a lot of problems, I'm there with the union. And I think that until you, again, abolish the unions, you know, that there's not going to be a answer in that path.
Vince?
Yeah, I would, it would be interesting, maybe in a future conversation, having representatives from the various unions here to really, to understand just the function of the union, or while we have a general understanding of the functioning. It would be interesting to hear how they would respond to that. I don't know how they would respond because I haven't asked them that question, but yeah.
Yeah. And so that actually is the only question that we're having specifically around the union. But what we are going to get really into the meat of, I think, what is really at the heart of so many people's questions about reform and abolition, which is the infrastructure. So we're going to spend the rest of this debate talking specifically about infrastructure. And Bruce, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, so our first question comes from Sharon Gary Smith. And I guess it'll be directed at Vince to start. Under police reform, who decides who the real bad apples are?
Under police reform, who defines, that falls on the chief. Well, the community actually should determine, it should be a partnership between community. The chief should be the one holding, the chief of police should be the one holding them accountable. Ultimately, it falls on us, as it pertains to the city council. Now that I think about, I haven't even asked that question before. So we're giving the expectation as it pertains to, this is our expectation, this is what we're looking for, for as it pertains to officers. And then the staff, i.e. the chief and our director of public safety, are the ones to ensure that those things happen. So they should be, they're responsible for developing a system that weeds out or holds the folks that are the quote-unquote bad apples accountable. And I believe that there should be a report back to the, to the community as it pertains to just how we go about solving these, these issues or challenges.
And Mac, do you have a response?
No, I mean, I think that's, that's the best answer under reform.
All right. Well, we'll go on to the next one. And so this question comes from Glenn Waco. And so the question is, what would the infrastructure possibly look like for the model of public safety if police were abolished? What would the role of public servants be in providing public safety? And since the checks and balances in most cities basically end with the accused investigating themselves, who would, how would a new checks and balance system for public safety in Portland, but we can expand that even to Gresham, function structured? And that is directed first at Vince.
Could you repost the question? I thought it was going to Mac first. I was like, I was looking forward to. I was like, that's it. What role, what?
So what would the infrastructure look like for the model of public safety if the police were abolished? What would the role of public servants be in providing public safety, and how would it function?
Yeah, I mean, I would answer it from a reform, I mean, I would answer it from my perspective. Sorry, the whole abolish term is going me, going me for Luke. Can we go with Mac first?
And then bring it to.
I think that's fair, that's really fair. There's a lot of models of public safety that are possible, right? And most of them are not tried, and that's a big issue that we're also dealing with is that this is something that's, that's old but also new. The idea of not having this Western style of policing. So I know that the model that I would look forward to would, first of all, be a model that looks to eliminate poverty. That's the first step. We have to start looking at targeting and eliminating poverty. And I don't mean people being poor and people being broke, I mean poverty. That's a whole different thing, right? Like the system of people actually having no one to go to, no way to get up, no stairs, right? So poverty is a big issue. More important than that, there's still going to be crime. Even if you deal with everything else, there's still crime, there's still problems, there's still a person-to-person violence, there's still different things that can occur. The role of a community safety has to be done by these communities. I think that for black people in specific, we've lost the ability to have really any um um independent kind of uh public safety, mainly because we've just just um integrated, especially in a place like Portland or Gresham. There's not a lot of us and we don't actually have like our own communities. And and so the danger that we uh get into is how do we, you know, even define our uh communities? And so I think that, again, in a in a world where I'm talking about abolishing the police state, we also have to look at a world that changes how resources are currently, uh you know, are divided. Because people have to have communities that have to have areas that um they live in, that they have to be able to choose where they live. If people are stuck in places that they can't, you know, survive, it's just a colonization on a smaller scale. And we see this across the world, places, you know, if we look at places that we generally I think of as safe in Portland area, like if you look at the Lake Oswego, right? It's safe. Are there cops everywhere? No, and it's mostly safe, but why? Because of resources. So it's so it's it's really not a a difficult question of how to reduce crime. But once you get a crime down, then you can look at how to deal with those, you know, those individual situations with. But if you're dealing with poverty and people just being upset uh uh because they have no homes or just stealing all the time, then that's not something that you can really uh fix with with the policing anyway. So it really becomes a matter of you have to to look at what is the economic situation, what is the situation of, you know, as far a- as as equity is concerned? And then you can deal with, you know, uh uh public safety. And I think that again, it comes with uh community groups. I think that you can do that very easily uh through, you know, we already have the D P S S T. We already have sheriffs. There's already state police. The Portland Police, uh which I'm saying to abolish, is just one thing. And they currently are just wasting resources. So it 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 becomes a matter, that's why I I'm always pushing the uh defund model, which means to uh take money away and keep on taking money away and keep on uh 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 finding ways to change the public safety as required. That's why I say it can't be an overnight uh process. You can't just just take all the cops off the street uh today. What you have to do is find other ways to accomplish uh their goals and start doing them and chipping away, but actually keep on chipping away.
And uh I I heard you Vince in saying, you know, the the term of abolish.
I got it now. I just had, like, yeah, I got it. So you want me to respond to the question or?
Yeah, really just a variant of what what Mac was alluding to in particular with, um, you know, if we're looking at infrastructure for um poorer communities, the calls have been for defunding the police. You know, especially in the last year. How would that look under police reform? Like, what does reallocation of funds from the police budget look like under uh to you?
Yeah, yeah, that uh first we have to identify the the problems and or challenges. You know, I lost my brother to gang violence back in two thousand thirteen and three months before he was shot and killed. He was describing West Gresham, which is Rockwood specifically. And he said, we, these kids, they need um programming, like after school programming. He was active um in the streets and and what have you. And he said, they need programming. And he said, I want to start an after school program. I said, yeah, Joe, you can do, you can, you could do that. And then upon his passing, I remember sitting there on the scene and um my mind immediately went back to the conversation that we had three months prior. And I was like, I want to start, start that. Uh, and then I remember just the experience that my family had as far as going through the investigation and um how we were just going through the investigation, how we were treated by by the officers on the scene. And I had opportunity to sit with the officers two years later. And I was like, our experience was was a low part was horrible. I used different words when we had that conversation. And I casted this vision as it pertains to our expectations or as far as officers in general, like each and every time you come in contact with someone that's active or living that life, you have an opportunity to help redirect them or connect with their family and all this other and all these other things. And the response for me at that time, five years ago, was like, we don't have enough funding to do that, or that's not our role and our responsibility. Since then, the it seems as if the conversation has shifted and they're like, oh, we do have the capacity to provide mental health services or take the time to work through these problems or these challenges with our with our community. But we need to hear that from the community and we need direction from, you know, council and staff. So I think that this is, this is a very complex issue and we all need to be, we all need to just have that conversation within your respective communities and with your uh with the officers that are choosing to to serve in that capacity, to define that and and make that up, we or or to define that and to build that. And that's what I'm looking for.
All right, we're gonna go to the next one. Thank you all.
Yeah, so our next question was submitted by Connie Lee. And I think we're gonna start with Vince on this one. How can we separate simple prostitution from sex trafficking by making the first legal rather than a misdemeanor? A sex trafficking department should not be investigating simple prostitution. That's a waste of money. Look at the Portland Sex Trafficking, Sex Trafficking Unit as a cautionary example. So again, kind of more of a statement, but uh would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I'm not too, I'm not too familiar with just that that process. I think that's a, that's a conversation that we need to have with our our state, with our our legislators and then um with city council in in Portland, for the commissioners in Portland.
And uh, yeah, Mac, would you like to uh respond to either Vince or the question statement?
I am afraid I I am not an expert in uh in law, so I I'm not authorized to give legal advice on the internet.
You did sound like a politician, though.
But I would, like I said, I would direct it to the our our legislators as it pertains to just those those rules. Cause obviously they're the ones that that set set them. Um, and then as far as and then officers are merely enforcing those 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 rules, right? Uh, so that would be, that's what I would, that's where I would go, you know, as far as changing that that law or that uh making change in that area.
So we'll we'll move on to the next one, which is really just a a, you know, a another variant. But can you cite specific example or excuse me, what are the alternatives when it comes to violent crime? Will a social worker suffice? And what will unarmed social worker do if the suspect becomes violent? Um, and we will direct that first question um to uh Mac.
That 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 first question is interesting is what are, what are the alternatives when it comes to violent crime? And the first thing I think of is like, well, there's all kinds of crime, right? But that's not what they're asking. Is they're saying, what are the alternatives to the police when it comes to 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 violent crime? I would start that with a serious question. And I've asked this question a lot and got a lot of different responses, but but they're mostly the same. Is when are the police called for a violent crime and they stop the violence? Like, that's not really a thing that happens on a on a regular basis. Either a crime happens, someone calls the police and the police come afterwards, or the police come and increase the violence or participate in the violence until it stops, right? So there's not really a, I'm not sure that when we say there's a certain a violent crime with the police are exactly what it is that we believe that that they are doing. This question is, it comes up often, but it's posed in a way that assumes that that the police are are stopping violent crime. Which if they were, then we wouldn't have, I'd be having these conversations in the first place. Cause cause violent crime is on the rise and and so is the budget.
Can I uh say when the the other part of this question, because it's really a two parter. But what are unarmed social workers supposed to do if somebody's getting violent? There have been more calls for people uh or of people saying that's bringing in social workers. So uh in in your view, what does that look like?
I think that social workers are, I think that social workers and honestly, the vast majority of public facing professionals are better at deescalation than than police. Um, as someone who's worked in security for multiple years, I've never shot or really even like punched anybody. And I've dealt with extreme amounts of violence and while, you know, and and knives and guns downtown, you know, in doing this and places, you know, in 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 bars and restaurants and things like that. My wife's a nurse and they deal with patients all the time that are violent or wild, that grab weapons, that turn things into weapons in the hospital. And they don't really call the police very often. Occasionally, they they have to call the police, very occasionally. I think that oftentimes the issue that we have with violent crime is that, again, people don't know each other. I know I've been at my house and there was a crime going on next door and I I went to the house next door and I called in the house and people were upset and they were screaming and telling people to leave, they're gonna get shot. And you just talk to people for a minute and before you know it, people leave and the police are coming and everyone's already gone, you know? I think that that this idea that that the police come in and shoot the problems away and that stops violence is it's 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 kind of nonsensical. And so this question for me, it just becomes a, you know, a difficult thing. We see our emergency workers respond to crimes and violent situations all the time. I mean, already paramedics, people working in clubs, bouncers, they they respond to violence all the time without shooting people. And oftentimes without even, you know, contacting the police or law enforcement. So I think that that really, there's a, is a loss that we have in a community. I think that's that's affects, you know, I I can't speak for as much, you know, about white crime. But I know in the black uh community, a lot of the issues that we have are just that people don't don't know each other. And so I think that these social services that we talk about, these are the people that show up 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 after the cops shoot people too, right? So it's 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 really a matter of getting these people out on the scene first. If the police, and and again, I'm about the uh 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 the defund model of abolishing the police. And so you scale away. The first thing is, uh can we get people on the scene first that aren't armed? Is that even possible, right? And you try that and you expand that and you push that as much as you can. But the problem is that we don't even try that. All we do is just, you know, grab the guns and cut the budget and go, you know, straight back to cops. But we aren't actually trying it. And when we try it, it works. There's examples of it working, even as close as like Eugene, we've seen that it works. But we just, you know, if you look at our Portland council, we just voted it down.
Vince, uh I know you can't speak for uh Portland specifically, but um just in the the context of this question. What do you see as alternatives to when it comes to violent crime? Um, and what does social worker suffice? And what would unarmed social worker do um if a suspect became violent?
Yeah, I I believe it's a both and.
This this question came from Jake Doctor, or not Jake Doctor, I'm sorry. This came from Jordan Class.
Great, great question, Jordan Class. Um, I I think it's a both, it's a both and. Um, I believe uh one, having officers there, it's for safety. And then two, having a a social worker should be responding to those types of calls. And I'm just primarily going off of the types of calls that come through our Boeot system or the system, just nine one one in general. I don't know the percentage. But if you're, I would much rather have a social worker be the first person there and then have an officer there as as backup. Uh, we just started a mental health team. Uh, it's called our uh community. It's our our mental health team where we have two licensed therapists and uh I think two officers that uh that work during the day here in the city of Gresham. And the therapists, they go in and meet with the, if there's a call, they meet with them first and they take the assessment. And then if they need an officer, the officer, the officer is there. Um, and then they also have a, we have a uh support dog and and what have you. And then I I believe that's the purpose of the, I believe that the city of Portland had a similar model at one point in time, but it just didn't get fully funded. Um, I think the biggest thing that needs to be implemented in in all of that is just the report back to the report outs as far as like, this is what's happening in our community. This is where we've had successes. These are the the challenges and then the uh accountability accountability with within that. Um, hopefully, our mental health team will be able to report to our council. Again, I'm not supposed to be a report to the community and into the council as far as their function, um because I think that's a, that's a solution per se. Um, I even asked, I I personally asked them a couple of weeks ago, like, what would it look like to have a social worker with all the officers? Or what have you seen that we do have an increase in mental health, uh mental health calls? So again, having a licensed therapist there to actually do an assessment and then ensure that the community member has the resources that they need to become healthy and whole. And then the officer is just there to ensure that everyone is um is is safe per se. So that's, those are my thoughts. I would be open to just feedback or questions on that or the rebuttal.
I'd like to know, when are you guys um uh starting that a model in Gresham? Because that that's really interesting.
Yeah, it's it's already started. It started two years ago or three years, maybe two thousand seventeen. Or two thousand eighteen.
And how often would you say like that team is being utilized?
We, I don't have the numbers right here in front of me. But you have my word, I can send you when they do a report out to the council. Hopefully, it will be here soon, within the next two months or so. Uh, we can invite you to the table or maybe we all just go out to coffee and just meet with them and talk to them. Or maybe they can be on here and we can have that conversation. If y'all are up to it.
Yeah.
Or if the community is up to it.
Cool. We're gonna move to the next one.
Yeah, so our next question sent in by Jake Doctor at Jake Doctor. And yeah, I think I'll direct it at Vince. And it's can you cite specific examples in Multnomah County where reform has resulted in systemic change and improvements?
Um, can I cite in Multnomah County? Uh, that's the reason why I ran for for office and that's not a political answer. That's the reason why I'm here. I can tell you, I can give you a list of things that uh we that I'm, that we that I'm, that we will be working on, uh things that need to be um that we will be working on. I I think that um the new hire of the uh D P S S T, Mr. Granderson, that's extremely exciting given his uh level of experience. Um, and then also his vision, um and the fact that he's not afraid to just call, call out just to, just where we are, you know, as a state and just his level of expectation. I I'm looking forward to see um how we how we grow as a as it pertains to public safety under under his leadership. Um, here at the city of Gresham, I believe, from what I've noticed, we've committed, again, I can't state it because uh we've we've committed to just doing the work in general, from what I've heard from my fellow counselors and from um specific folks um from our from our police department. And uh and then also same in in Portland as well. So I, um, so that's my, that's my answer to that.
And Mac, would you like to respond?
No, I think Vince is right on. And I'm, again, this is why I said before that I was glad that that Vince is here, you know, excuse me, is there in Gresham, you know, um doing that because, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just, I don't think it's fair that I didn't give you specific examples, effective in Portland that you guys have decided to take money out of the budget. That's a specific example to put money money towards community based uh community based organization shows that the leaderships are not afraid to lean into these and lean into these uh into doing the work as it pertains to the systemic change and and what have you. And then the things I already mentioned in Gresham as well, but go ahead.
No, no, no worries. I was gonna say, you know, I think that there's, there's often a lot of um, it's often a lot of changes that occur, you know, this, you know, the uh the oversight boards and things like that. I'm not sure I see systemic changes across the county. I definitely have seen some improvements. You know, improvements unfortunately can come and go, you know, as quietly as they come, they can go. But I I, you know, I've I really lacked any insight into really into any real systemic changes. I feel like, I mean, and maybe since like measure eleven would be like the last thing I can really think of is like, it's like a real, it's like a major systemic change that had actual impacts. You know, on 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 people's long term lives, you know, we had a chance here with some of this, you know, stuff about the um, you know, the uh uh juries, the um, the uh, what do you call it, the uh non-memis juries? And we didn't get that either. It's 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 things like that that I really look at as likes, as like a systemic changes. Things that don't result in us just being in jail, you know, incorrectly or properly or improperly or or really just for, you know, in order to miss, you know, just really in jail at all. Um, uh uh things that keep us free and keep us safe is why I say as systemic changes. And as far as with policing, I've seen cops get a lot friendlier in the, you know, in the county, but that's that, that's probably it.
All right. Um, and without, uh, you know, we're, we're only here with each other for an hour. Uh, so, uh, we have one more question, uh, going into the close. Um, and this one actually came in anonymously. Uh, the question is, have international examples or movements factored into your ways of envisioning and ideally enacting police and prison abolition? Does abolishing the police involve international solidarity with refugees, migrants, et cetera as well? And that's directed at Mac.
I think it can, but I don't think it needs to. I think that there's a, there's a, uh, want by many to make abolishing the police like a sexy thing, you know? And I understand it's the same way that I got the question earlier saying, you know, abolishing seems scary, you know? Their words, words aren't scary. The idea really here is a fiscal concept. And it's really a concept about a reform. So as far as how international examples of movements affect into those, that's all cool. I watch what's going on, you know, around the world. I've, I, I read a lot of history. This is, this is kind of a new thing. So this isn't something that everyone is really fighting. This is something, you know, I think that there's obviously, there's a solid, a, a darity, you know, within our movements. That's important, you know? But I don't think that in order to achieve the goal of abolishing the Portland, uh, police, that there needs to be interna- like international solidarity. I, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a requirement.
And for you, Vince, just in terms of like reforms, um, you know, substantive reforms, are you looking at international models at all, um, in terms of making something different for not just, uh, the police, but, uh, prison?
Yeah, yeah, of course. Um, we need to, yes, I, I worked for a, a nonprofit that's based in Rwanda. And Rwanda, most folks may think of Rwanda, they think of Hotel Rwanda. Um, and the genocide, the massive genocide that happened in 1994 where it was an actual ethnic cleansing and it birthed out of, uh, just the, the factions between three groups and it was led, uh, was put on by the, the colonizers for the, um, uh, yeah, the colonizers and a government and it lasted over their series of 59 years. And it got to a point in 1994 where over a million people were, were slaughtered and killed. Um, because of that, because of this, this messaging that they were perpetuating in this division. Uh, but to date Rwanda is known as one of the top countries to do business. It's known for, uh, no, literally no corruption and, um, and law and order. And at the heart of all of it is reconciliation and truth. And that's one of the things that I, I, I revert back to when I engage in these conversations, whether it's with my colleagues on council or officers or folks from the police department or even community as it pertains to truth and reconciliation, what does that truly mean? And using that to come up with a solution, come up with, uh, with a solution that works for us here in the state of Oregon. And hopefully, hopefully it will lead throughout the whole, throughout the whole country. Cause I don't know if anyone has really figured it out yet as it pertains to public safety or, or police, police reform. So I'll revert back to that and I think about how that applies to us, um, here, here in the states. And then to that second part of the question, that, that's what, uh, we need to have, we need to deal with the reality, uh, here in Gresham and here in Portland. Um, and create space for those truths to, to be shared. And then also collectively work together as it pertains to a solution. And I think that we're actively trying to figure out what does that look like? And I believe that, um, and that's how real change and or reform happens, um, here as it pertains to public safety. And then in that, we need to look at the whole system. When you think about the judicial system to our prison systems. Um, just talked to my uncle last night who's serving a life sentence. He said, well, we're warehousing us right, right now. There's no, there's no rehabilitation to, it's not rehabilitation. Uh, and the, the brothers that are, that have been rehabilitated in the system, they're stuck there because of something that they've been slapped with, um, a sentence that they've been hit with. So we have to reimagine the whole thing and it starts with the truth that pertains to how the system was built in the first place and then our expected outcomes and the building out a system that builds us up. Um, and that, and that doesn't perpetuate the problem or perpetuate the issue and or challenges that we have, that we're facing here, um, as a country. Um, and that, that does include law enforcement as well, so.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Y'all both, uh, we're actually gonna do a little bit of a bonus track real quick. Kick it, kick it over to Bruce. Uh, you're, you're on mute, Bruce.
Your turn.
We, we had to get one. We had to get one. Um, yeah, so this question was submitted by Anonymous. And start with Vince on this. Does reforming the police include revoking or severely prohibiting when the police can use deadly force? For example, police do not and cannot carry firearms unless the situation is expected to merit it, such as practiced in the UK.
Hmm, is the question gonna pop up on the, on the screen or?
Uh, no, cause it's the bonus track, Vince.
Oh, okay. My bad. I'm gonna need you to replay the question. Uh, actually, no, I can just, uh, base off the last. I, me personally, I personally don't feel as though that anyone should have the power to take someone else's life. Um, I, in full disclosure, full disclosure, I applied to be a police officer. Um, and I, before I applied, um, when I was thinking about the things I would be faced with, those are the questions that I, I, I thought through. Um, and that's just me. And granted, I've never, I've never served in that capacity. Um, so I would, I think another key point for me is like, I think we need to rethink the methods that we use to keep our community safe. Um, and also we need to understand what methods are they using? Why do they have those methods in the first place? Where did that come from? How did we come to justify? Now, how do we, uh, how do we come to justify, uh, all these tools and things that we have? Um, so that's a conversation that we need to have as a, as a community, so.
Mac, do you have a response?
You know, I, I struggle with it, um, with, with, with this question. Which is again, why abolition makes things a lot easier for me. But, um, you know, in, in the meantime, I do think that there obviously has to be something different, you know? Um, this is not unfortunately the UK and people do have guns. You know, that's the reality of our situation here. I love, I loved it when Vince said, you know, I, I feel like people shouldn't be able to take each other's lives. Cause like philosophically, that's absolutely accurate. But like in reality, it's just not true. Anybody can take anyone's life at any time. And so, um, you know, when it comes to arming the police and using deadly force, you know, to me, it's less about the tools that they have as far as like pistols and things. They're out there with AR-15s and all that. That's a different story. But you know, it's, it's, it's less about the tools that they have than it is their ability to make decisions on when to use them. You know, perhaps if they don't have the ability to use those weapons, then perhaps they shouldn't have them. If I'm as, you know, a, a security guard and I don't have a, a, a carry license, I have to go unarmed. But I'm still gonna, I'm seeing the same bad guys as everyone else. And so sometimes not having a weapon makes you a little bit more, um, a, a little better at your job. So perhaps, you know, there's a, you know, a bit of a, of a, of a push and pull there. As far as like, as far as like in a reform world, in my world, again, there's no cops, so they wouldn't have guns.
Thank you. Um, we're, we're gonna do one last bonus track for y'all. And it's gonna be from, uh, one of the questions out there that's popped up through Facebook. And then we're gonna go into our closing statements for the night and appreciate y'alls, uh, staying with us. Um, this one comes from, uh, this one comes from Tanya Grissard. Uh, it says Gresham has body cameras on cops, Portland does not. DA says budget needs to be increased for Portland just to look at footage. Did body cameras drive up the budget in Gresham? And did they help or not help systemic change?
That, that's a great question. I would say it did help systemic, it, it's helping systemic change. I think one of the things that we need to do is like, how do we share that information with the community? And is that, um, is that even possible? Um, those are, those, those are areas that I haven't looked at yet. Um, the budget for the DA, I've heard the DA's office mention it specifically that it has gone up because you have to review the footage, um, from, from those, from, from those calls. Um, so that's accounting, that's a challenger, uh, accounting challenge. Uh, but that's something that we haven't, we haven't discussed or talked about as a council since I've been on council. Um, I know that we've, I, yeah, so that, that's something that we haven't, uh, discussed yet.
Great. Um, Mac, we'll give you a chance to respond to it before we.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not a fan of body cameras, not thinking, not that, I don't think that people should be recorded. I just, just don't think that they're extremely effective in getting the change that we want. We do some stuff like we saw the George Floyd thing that wasn't off a body, a, a camera though, so like, I think even in Gresham, Isaiah Barry, is it? He was shot, I think, last year. Um, I think like, I, I think like just, uh, uh, just barely a year ago. He was shot, um, last year, uh, by, uh, uh, Gresham police, I think in Rockwood. And, um, they still haven't even released the, uh, uh, the body cam footage.
I think that was in Portland.
I, I think it was in Portland, but it was Gresham, uh, police that did the shooting. I think it was like in Rockwood. But yeah, they shot like a white guy. So it's, you know, and they still, that's still like under investigation. It's been a whole year and they have the whole footage, you know? So I think, you know, in Portland, we passed the body cams five or six years ago. And we even, I got it funded, but we, we just never, uh, put the cameras on because, uh, the union had complaints. So, you know, for it to be a money issue is kind of, it, it, it is really not the thing. It's really just a matter again of just subterfuge. You know, if the systems that don't, you know, if, if the system itself is resisting change, how can it be reformed?
Yeah, we should have, we should have, uh, DA Mike Schmidt, um, on there so, so he can share. Or someone from the DA's office just to share how they process information. Um, cause he said it is, I, I don't remember the numbers. It was like from three months ago when he shared it with us. Um, but it is, um, from the DA's perspective, by law, they have to review all the footage. Um, and it's increased it quite a bit. So we have to figure out a way to, um, how to cover that, that cost and what that would look like if Portland brought that on too. And I don't know if that goes into the, the decisions that they make. That's, uh, I haven't been a part of those conversations.
I know it's a part of the, uh, of the, uh, union discussions now too, cause your question, are they wanting funding for that as well? So it's always more money.
For sure. Well, we're, we're gonna close out, but to, to Vince's point, for anybody who's been watching, if, if you think there, there's only so much ground that can be covered in our conversation. If you think there should be a part two, uh, comment two in the, the chat and we'll take that into account. But put a two if you would like to see a, a continued version of this conversation and Bruce.
Yeah. With that, we're gonna move to closing statements. So yeah, we'll start with Vince and then Mac. Uh, final thoughts for everyone viewing tonight.
Yeah, we don't wanna flip it. I went first last time.
I'm tired of highlighting.
Okay, okay. Uh, yeah.
Go ahead, Mac.
I can go first. Um, I don't have anything like, like, like a written statement or anything. I would just say that, um, you know, when it comes to abolishing the police, I think a lot of people, um, hear that term and get afraid. I think we've, uh, seen that in some of the questions today. Um, abolition, if we think about it as we applied it to slavery, that's why the term abolition is also used, uh, you know, with the police, we, you know, police abolition. The idea is to eliminate, uh, policing and eliminate people from being incarcerated or, or, or being enslaved for, um, you know, uh, petty crime. There's a lot to still be understood in what is possible and what is not. But you can only, I, I, I find out, uh, what is possible by traveling the path. And that's why I feel that, uh, the funding of the police is really the best way to get to abolition. It's the, it's, it's truly the process, not just of, of, of cutting off chunks of budget here and there, you know, randomly and doing, you know, just, you know, a formless reforms. It's really a matter of taking away processes from the police to really, uh, turn, uh, the police into, into really, uh, just a unit that, that makes arrests. You know? Eliminating their purposes all the way down to the nitty gritty. And then at that point, you can establish, you know, uh, what is left and, you know, and what is needed. If you've ha- have ever worked for any company anywhere that has gone through a reform, the process is always exactly the same. You take away a lot of budget and you eliminate a lot of positions and you find out what's necessary and then you work from there. The police is essentially the only organization that does things the exact opposite way. Asks, um, um, uh, for more money and provides more trainings that that don't help and then shows no results and then does the same thing again in four years. This is why people are calling, uh, uh, for complete abolition of the police because the, uh, police themselves have shown that they are resistant, um, to reform. And they are doing so in concert with the city as well as with the, uh, police union. And so that's why unless we're, I'm talking about eliminating, you know, uh, uh, QI and, you know, abolishing a, a union, it really is no, uh, uh, discussion in my mind about the police reform.
What is QR? Just one, uh, real quick.
Sorry, a qualified immunity.
Thank you. Um, and then Vince?
Yeah, uh, again, thank you, uh, Brother Bruce and Brother Donovan and Brother Mac for just, uh, engaging in this conversation in the community as well, as far as participating with the questions. Um, um, we should have had these conversations along, uh, all, along the way. Um, and, um, Saturday, it's because of murder of George Floyd and all these other instances that we've had or experienced, um, that we, that we are here today, but hey, we're having the, having the conversation. Um, I would encourage, uh, those that are listening to, uh, to press your, the folks that you have elected to office. Uh, your electeds are the ones that are giving the officers, uh, direction and those, again, just officers that police, uh, in your community. Um, and I truly believe it takes, uh, all of us to reimagine or define what does community safety look like? Uh, and then also I would challenge us to just educate ourselves as far as like the various functions and why those certain things are in place today. And then if you don't want them, let your electeds know of those that are empowered so we can make those, the cha- those changes happen. Um, I do believe that we need to rethink and abolish the methods that we use to keep our community safe. Um, whether that's through, and just the, the things that we're asking our officers to do. And then we should divvy up the, um, um, uh, we, we should examine that and, and abolish that, uh, together. And, uh, you need to do that in your own specific communities because the Lakos we go's problems and or challenges or Westland's problems and or challenges aren't gonna be the same challenges that you have out in the north. Um, or the challenges that you have here in, in Rockwood and or, and or Gresham. Um, ultimately, we all have to be a part of, uh, we all need to be a part of these conversations and do the work in order to, uh, build up, uh, a community safety system that works for, works for us. Uh, and those that are coming home as well. So again, uh, just thank you brothers for facilitating this, this conversation and we should again, do this again. Maybe once a week or something, just to, or once a month or, or what have you. And then invite other, other folks into the conversation as well. Like I said, Mr. Granderson from DPS ST and then, um, some other electeds too. Uh, and possibly even like DA or whomever else. So, um, let's do it and let's continue to, to imagine and hold, hold folks accountable and build.
Thank you. Thank you, Vince, Mac. Uh, again, for participating, very important discussion on public safety and hopefully the first of, yeah, the first of many. And also again, want to thank Vanport Mosaic for sponsoring this event, making space for conversations like this because, you know, we talked about we're not having this discussion or we're not having it framed this way a lot. So it takes people making space for that and being very intentional about, you know, being able to push the conversations forward. So yeah, again, just want to thank Laura, thank Vanport Mosaic. And I'll turn it over to Donovan.
Yeah, um, and you know, we're, we're hearing y'all on, uh, seeing a part two. Um, so, uh, with that being said, uh, this is, uh, a for sure part one that you can be sharing with your, your friends, your family, uh, you know, politicians, grandparents, um, to, to add to this discussion. So please be sharing this out. Um, and, um, it looks like y'all have created more work for me and Bruce. Um, and, um, it looks like y'all have created more work for me and Bruce. So, but I also, I also asked the question, so, um, but yeah, make sure this video has life. We wanted to, to be part of the, the dialogue moving forward. Um, and as you're sharing, talking about tonight's debate, um, again, be using that uh hashtag um reform versus abolish, so we can track well what you've been thinking uh about tonight's discussion. Um, and also, uh, have it fall into, um, what seems like a likely part two. Um, and you, uh, may come to tonight's debate. Um, you know, looking, we, we framed it as, you know, team reform versus team abolish. Um, but, but there is no winner uh for tonight's debate. Um, this is just a, ultimately, a, a discussion uh about our lives um and how we do uh public safety. We all want to be safe. We all want to feel safe. Um, and so, uh, we're, we're trying to add to the discussion of how we get there. Um, and so there's, there's no uh winners in that. Um, so we, we ultimately make the decision to do that. So we appreciate, once again, uh, Mac and Vince for coming to the table uh for this discussion. Um, and, and uh pushing the conversation for with this. Um, so thank y'all again for being a part of the first uh reform versus abolish debate on safety. Thank y'all.
Thanks for having us. I appreciate it. Hey, Vince, it's good to meet you, man. We'll have to, have to catch up sometime.
Yes, sir. Breakfast out here at Sweet Betty's.
Oh, I'll holler. I live in the numbers. I'm not that far.
Really? Okay, I'll text you. I got you locked in.
All right, for sure. I'll holler.
All right.